Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Please call the roll.
Mary McCauley.
Here.
Lisa Deacon.
Here.
Scott Gingold.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Marina Aravalo.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
And with four members present, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klutz and zoning and planning administrator Demir Litinovic. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are two agendas, there are two items on the agenda this evening, and anyone wishing to speak on those two cases, please raise your right hand and swear. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Fantastic. All right. So our first item tonight is to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Are there any comments?
I have a slight correction to the meeting minutes. It states that I had concerns about the use of the Goodwill Industries at the Evanston Plaza, which is true, and then it goes on to further state that it would have a negative impact on existing and future tenants. My concern was related to the impact on potential future tenants, not the existing tenants.
Okay. That correction will be made. Are there any other comments? Then do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of June 7, 2016, with the corrections as noted.
Second. Excellent. It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to new business. Melissa, will you introduce the first case, please?
707 Howard Street, units B and C. Christopher Collins, potential L.A.C., applies for a special use permit for a craft brewery, North Shore Cider Company, in the B3 Business District, which requires a special use permit for a craft brewery to operate. Zoning Code Section 6943. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: special use application submitted June 3, 2016; standards form; plat of survey; business description; site plans; image of property; aerial view of property; zoning map of property; and DAPR meeting minutes of June 15, 2016.
All right. Would you like to explain your case to us?
Yes. My name is Chris Collins. I'm a resident of Evanston. I have a short presentation.
Look at that.
Thank you. I just put this together real quickly today. This is my new logo from Matt LaFleur. He's a local artist. Thought I'd throw that in there. But I'm an amateur cider maker. I've been doing this for the past six years. This is my first business, potentially my first business, given favorable ruling. I previously employed as a bond analyst and a management consultant. This is kind of something different for me, and looking forward to it. So North Shore Cider Company will be a craft cattery located at 707 Howard, units B and C. I'll produce hard cider on-site there from apples that I source from Earth First Farms in southwestern Michigan and pears as well. Earth First Farms is actually owned by the same owner as Heartland Cafe in Rogers Park, so that's how I know him. Cider will be sold for off-site consumption, and branded merchandise will also be sold at the location. Tastings, I plan on tastings in disposable containers as well. I'll have limited retail hours to start with, as it'll only be me starting this business, and they'll be from Thursday and Friday, 7:30 Saturday and Sunday, from 12 to 4:00. And then the cider will also be distributed locally to restaurants and stores in the This is part of the packet already submitted. This is the interior plan for the store here. The front part will be dedicated retail space, while the back will be production area. And so wanted to discuss the production needs and the deliveries that will be required for my purposes. Deliveries will happen during only business hours during the weekdays. I will be receiving deliveries of apple and pear juice, and that'll happen shortly after the harvest. So it'll be pressed at Earth First Farms, and then I'll receive deliveries of containerized vats of juice, and that'll happen from October through December. And I expect a delivery of a vat a week or so. And then I will also be bottling my cider, and part of the bottling process requires CO2, so bottles and CO2 will be delivered year-round, and I expect at most once-a-month delivery of those. And here are the exterior plans. As you can see, the building already has a space in the back adjacent to the alley for parking and loading. One of the questions that came up in the DAPR review was the potential for smells from the process of making cider. Ciders actually produce differently than beer. Beer is brewed, whereas cider is vinified. In brewing, you essentially stick a whole bunch of grain in a vat, heat it up, and in that heating process, vapors are released. And these vapors carry the malt smells and hop smells that are associated with brewing beer. This will not be the case for cider. Cider, if I move to the next slide, there we go. This is the beer production. You can see the mash tun, the copper kettle is also, boil kettle is what it's also called. Those are the two process steps that require heat in brewing. These are not present in cider. In fact, cider really starts, so you've got the pressed juice, and then it's fermented. So it's the same process from fermentation on as beer, but prior to fermentation, beer has the heated elements that will not be present in my production, because I'll be producing cider versus beer. And then, this is my short presentation. Just wanted to hit on the key points of the production process and the deliveries.
So just out of curiosity, if there's no heating process, you're receiving, then your juice is already pasteurized and all of that stuff?
It is. Yep. It is UV pasteurized.
Got it.
So you do this entire thing yourself?
Fermentation, yes.
How many employees, just you?
Just me, yeah.
With the retail and the production?
Yes. The production, I mean, really, the yeast does the production for me. It's a pretty simple process.
And the bottling and everything?
And the bottling, yeah.
Okay.
What size trucks do you take delivery in?
There'll be freight trucks with a lift gate that'll need to drop down. I won't have a loading dock at this space, so there won't be any semis. It'll just be...
So it's a smaller box truck?
It'll be a smaller box truck, yes.
Okay. And how about garbage? Where's garbage? Is that, I'm assuming that's out in the alley? There's a dumpster?
You can't really see it. It's kind of small. It's the, well, I could point...
Oh, it's next to the doors?
It's next to the doors, yes. Thank you.
Okay. And so you get delivery of just the cider and the CO2?
And the bottles.
And the bottles?
Yep.
And the CO2 in the cider you get once a week in the fall?
Yes. The cider I get, or the juice I get once a week.
The juice, sorry, that's what I meant.
The juice is once a week in the fall. The bottles and CO2 is once a month, all year round.
Okay. Okay. And the only employee is you?
Is me at this point, yes.
And where do you anticipate, when do you anticipate adding employees?
I anticipate adding employees a few months in, assuming that it's successful.
Sure. And how many employees would you be adding?
At least one to help out with the retail space.
Okay. And how many parking spots are available on the site?
There are two employee parking spots in addition to the loading area, which, when it's not used for loading, could potentially be used for parking.
And are you planning any changes to the front of the building?
No, I'm not. Besides potential signage.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
So you're leasing the space?
Yes, I am.
And remind me, who's in unit A? I don't recall.
There's a barber shop in unit A.
And then there was mention that you don't currently anticipate any special events, but you may hold that out depending on how business goes and what the potential is.
Yeah, how business goes, whatever arises, I can't anticipate what a special event would be at this point. I'm planning on tours, but there isn't going to be a whole lot to tour at this point. Like I said, it's a simple process.
Are there other cider brewers in Chicago?
They're Wright B Cider. I don't know if you heard of them. They're in Chicago.
Okay.
And yes. But they're the only ones that I know of that are producing locally.
Thank you.
Well, I hope that you do have a lot of events, and there is a new creperie-galleterie on Simpson Street, so it would be nice to marry the cider with the gallets in the Normandy fashion. So it looks like a very interesting project.
Well, thank you.
You might also want to consider, like, talking to your alderman about apprenticeship programs. It's a way to get some young people involved and teach them the craft and get some employees sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Any other comments? Is there anybody else here who'd like to speak? Is there anything you'd like to say in summation?
No, other than thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We will now close the record. You can have a seat. Comments? Oop, lights.
I think it's a wonderful plan. I'm so pleased. There's been, you know, some really interesting developments along those blocks of Howard Street, and this segues really nicely with the theater plan and the other new restaurants and, you know, cocktail lounges that have sprung up along that same block. So I think it's perfectly consistent, and I wish you all the best. We'll come and taste.
I agree. I think it's a nice use there. As a gluten-free person, I am your customer, so I look forward to enjoying what you're producing there.
And I appreciate the diversity of businesses on Howard, the new things that are coming in, and I'm looking forward to it as well.
Excellent. So as we know, this is a special use, and so we're just giving a recommendation to city council for approval, and there are nine standards for special uses. So let me go through those as quickly as I possibly can. Number one, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Clearly getting more retail in a retail district is one of the purposes of the Comprehensive General Plan, so I think that's an important thing here. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. Again, this is a street that is in the middle of a renaissance, as it were, with restaurants and bars and things like that, and I think that this is a particularly good fit for the neighborhood and for what we're trying to do on Howard Street. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. In fact, I would argue that it does exactly the opposite by filling in those empty storefronts, where just increasing the value of that neighborhood and the desirability of that neighborhood. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It's on Howard, so we're close to public transportation. There is street parking and other city lots nearby, so in addition, the owner, sorry, the appellant does not think that, the applicant, sorry, does not believe that he'll have that much traffic, aside from the short hours that they will be open. So I don't think that there'll be a traffic issue with this particular use. Number five, it can, oops, I already did that one. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, there is the one employee at the time, and so there will be parking in the back for that, and then the short hours of opening will not cause any undue traffic congestion to the neighborhood. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. There's nothing significant about the building, but it's always nice to reuse an older building that's been unused and fallen into a bit of disrepair, so I think that's always a good thing. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, by reusing an existing building, we're preserving natural features, environmental features. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the planned development process or the grant of a variation. And it certainly does when it gets all its licenses. So given that this is a recommendation to the city council, I think the one thing we probably have to talk about are hours of operation. Thoughts?
Well, obviously, with one employee and talking about having limited tastings, that is, he's not asking for extended hours of operation. I would really not curtail the hours of operation of a new business, except that they be consistent with other businesses along Howard Street there, because hopefully, you will have many employees and you will be open as late as some of the, you know, peckish pig or whatever. But, you know, so I would really not want to curtail the hours of operation beyond those that are consistent with other businesses on the block.
I would agree with that. And so Melissa, what are the hours of the restaurants that are nearby? And do we want to just go 12 to 10?
I believe they're open until midnight on weekends.
On weekends, but like 12 to 10 during the week?
Yeah.
Some open before noon also.
Oh, okay. Do you just want to make it?
10 to 10.
How far do we want that to go?
10 to 10.
Well, you know, perhaps we just want to, since this is a recommendation, leave that open?
We always give a range of hours. So I guess we go 10 to 10 Monday through Thursday, and 10 to midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? And Sunday. So the other things to keep in mind, right, are employee parking when you're making the That's it, right? Hours, employee parking, and it'd be developed in compliance with testimony on record. So can I get a motion, please?
Sure. I will move that in the issue of ZBA 16ZMJV0049, for the cider company at 707 Howard Street, that we recommend approval to the city council, provided that the hours of operation are consistent with 10 to 10 weekdays and 10 to midnight on the weekends, and that the business be conducted in compliance with your presentation, which was very nice. Thank you. It's my...
Second.
Hang on. Can we have an amendment on employee parking?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody want to address that?
Can I just amend my motion to include that there be parking for employees at least two spaces in the rear of the building?
Thank you.
Now, second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, the motion has carried and will be moved on to city council with its recommendation. Good luck to you, sir. And moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is... Something.
1919.
Thank you, 1919 Church. It's like getting handed four pieces of paper. 1919 Church Street. If you can tell us, Melissa will first start by telling us a little about your project, and then you can tell us.
Robert Edelman, contractor, applies for a special use permit and major zoning relief to replace existing ComEd equipment in the B2 Business District and the OWE West Evanston Overlay District, which requires a special use permit for a public utility. Zoning Code Section 6933. The applicant requests to replace existing utility equipment with DC in-a-box utility equipment screened from the right-of-way by landscaping, where screening by landscaping and a solid fence is required. Zoning Code Section 61515XXI-C1. Landscaping, where landscaping and a three-foot-to-four-foot steel or PVC picket fence is required to screen open parking from the right-of-way along Brown Avenue. Zoning Code Section 61515XVIII-B5. And a continuous hedge with plantings spaced 48 inches on center, where a continuous hedge with plantings spaced 36 inches on center is required. Zoning Code Section 61515XXI-C2. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: special use application submitted June 2, 2016; major variation application submitted June 2, 2016; standards form; zoning analysis; existing plat of survey; site plan and landscaping plan; renderings; image of property; aerial view of property; zoning map of property; DAPR meeting minutes of April 27, 2016; and DAPR meeting minutes of June 8, 2016.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. Hello. Good evening. My name is Darren Bounde. Address is 1500 Franklin Boulevard in Libertyville. Thank you for having us tonight. And as Melissa said, the reasoning behind our attendance here tonight is to seek a variance that would approve our elimination of the fence and to space the landscape buffer at 48 inches on center instead of 36. The reasoning behind, excuse me, the reasoning behind eliminating the fence from the DC in-a-box is because for ComEd, we no longer require with this application, we no longer require there to be a fence around it for security purposes or for safety of the public. There's no need for it. Additionally, we feel the solid, you know, the elimination of the solid fence might not be as attractive as doing a landscaping buffer. The additional spacing between our landscaping was decided on in order to create a softer appearance, which should fit in with the new development to the east and the high school across the street. It was also an accommodation from the area, excuse me, it was also an accommodation from the area residents, as requested via Alderman Homes, with the support of staff. This DC in-a-box transition is a part of a larger 4KV to 12KV conversion that ComEd's doing in the area of Brown and Church. It's a capacity expansion for the area, which will allow ComEd to increase the electrical service capacity and to provide redundancy for the area, for this area of the city. While the variance, excuse me, while the variant, oh, I should state that the current equipment that's on-site there is a 4KV unit currently. While this variance only concerns the work at the DC in-a-box site, there's a large amount of ancillary work in the immediate area that's necessary to bring the redundant service feeders to the new 12KV unit. This work is designed to increase reliability and add redundancy. For example, at present, should the current unit fail or need work, it takes 12 switching operations for us to restore service to that area. With the completion of this DC in-a-box, the installation and the ancillary work, it'll only take two switching operations, which will greatly improve not only redundancy, reliability, but also the speed that we can perform work in that area. With that being said, is there any questions?
I have a question. Does this change or reduce the volume of what's currently at that corner?
Well, there'll be, the unit itself is approximately eight-and-a-half feet tall, roughly nine by eight. There'll be three regulators, there are smaller devices there. As you can see, the three boxes in front, that'll be out in front. With the removal of the fence, excuse me, with the removal of the fence, the equipment is smaller. It is enclosed, as opposed to being open, freestanding, needing the protection of a fence. So yes, it would be smaller.
But will it reduce the footprint of what you have over there now?
Um...
No? Okay. Just asking.
My colleagues have an answer for me, so no.
Okay.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
The landscaping that surrounds the current equipment that you have is, you know, as Alderman Homes pointed out in the DAPR meeting, a little overgrown, a little shabby, and I saw in the notes that you had not intended to install any kind of irrigation system to water the new plantings. So can you address how that will be maintained in the future? Because, I mean, it would be great to have the landscaping plan that you have envisioned there, but if it goes to seed quickly, then that would, it would once again become a very unattractive parcel in the middle of a commercial block. So I'd love to know how you're going to maintain that.
Understood. I don't have that question again. All right. Robert?
If we can just have your name and address too, sir?
My name is Robert Edelman, 24 Mayfair Lane, Lincolnshire, Illinois. I've been, I'm the project manager for this project. I've been working with Berry Landscaping, because as they were recommended, it's doing work previously in Evanston, and the work came highly recommended. We've asked them to choose the species of plants that were on the list of plants that Evanston recommended, and we picked plants that had high potential for growth without a lot of water. As far as the two existing trees on the south side of the station, north side of Howard, I've put a request in with the veg management group in Evanston to come out and trim the trees. That came from the DBA meeting. The request was to clean that up, so hopefully we'll see that before the project even starts.
Will you have a maintenance contract with this landscaping company?
Right now, we do not have a maintenance contract. We've chosen species that will be about three feet when we plant them, and the spacing of the 48 inches allows plenty of... of the 48 inches allows plenty of time and room for them to grow without needing to be, you know, worry about them overgrowing upon one another.
Right. So who mows the parkway? The parkway in front on the two sides? Because if you guys don't have a maintenance agreement, who's doing that?
So as, as, for it stands with maintenance around our, our stations, we contract that out. So we have a department internally that will take care of, we have several stations around the service territory. We make sure that the lawn is mowed, the trees are trimmed, things of that nature.
So ComEd has...
We, we have that.
You have in-house maintenance for that?
We have.
Okay. And so how often do they visit the sites to, to maintain it?
It varies. It varies from station to station depending on where they're located, what the requirements are around them. For this specific one, I don't have that in front of me as to how often they could be there. It, it depends. I mean, is it a lot of grass in front of it? Will have a mowing schedule? If it's vegetation that needs to be trimmed, how often does it need to be trimmed? So it's all the plan for that station.
I think one of the other concerns I have is just litter, right? You had a fence before, so all of, everything stayed outside the lot, and now it's going to be everywhere. Do you guys have a, a plan for that? Are the, are the maintenance guys taking care of that as well?
When we get complaints on that or we see that, we, we work to address that. I mean, we'll see litter accumulate around the edges of our fence as well. Stuff can get thrown inside of a fence as, at the same token. You know, the, the concept here was to, to, I believe, put in a lower growing species so that you'd have a more line of sight, buffer it, but also have a line of sight, and then have the separation between the trees so that they'd, you know, hopefully reduce the, the want to do that. I mean, I feel like a fence is up there, I've seen it before where it gathers around them and, so again, I believe it can occur on both.
I appreciate that you're, these are accommodations in, in each instance to what was requested of you at the DAPR meeting, and that's, it's really great that you're accommodating their recommendations. It would be really lovely if you could post on the premises a contact number so that if a neighbor, someone from YOU or just a citizen passing by notices a problem that there is a contact number for maintenance at the ComEd facilities. I've, you know, I have often, working in that, in that neighborhood, thought, erg, someone needs to know about this. So that would be, and you know, people can call 311, but it really is great if people say, here, here we are, we want to know if there's a problem, here's how you reach us. So just a suggestion.
I'll absolutely take that back.
Thanks. Is there a difference in noise, in volume, between the two equipment, pieces of equipment?
Between the noise on them?
Yeah. The decibel levels.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I understand from staff that there have been conversations with YOU. Can you describe how involved they've been and what sort of feedback and if they're supportive of this?
Do you guys have that, the conversation between YOU? You do. Tom, you.
Bob Edelman again. YOU was at the DAPR meeting and asked their questions, and we addressed them at that point. In addition, I've been in contact with Leo Pardo, who's doing the current construction for the U project. I've spoken with their superintendent, we had a meeting with their superintendent and the superintendent for our contractor to discuss their schedule and the impact that it might have with our schedule. We've exchanged phone numbers between each other so that we know that they should be finished before we start. They had some concerns on some of the utilities they're putting in, and we're working with them. We're aware of it and we're coordinating so that the effort, that we won't have any impact upon their schedule and hopefully the same, that they won't have any on ours. As far as the previous comment with regards to trash, there are currently garbage cans located at the northeast corner of Brown and Church for people to dispose of any of their garbage, should they take advantage of that. Along with the alley has various trash bins, so there are sources there for people to dispose of their garbage properly. As far as signage, there's currently signage on the plant, on the gates that direct a number to call if there's any situations, and I'm pretty sure that we'll have similar signage that we can put up for people to call. Thank you.
I have a question. I wanted to know if, are you just coincidentally changing your equipment now or is this in a response to the building being built next door?
We're doing this 4KV to 12KV conversion across our system, upgrading it as capacity increases around the area. We're doing capacity improvements.
So you would be doing that anyway?
We're doing these, yeah, we're, we are doing these. I, I don't believe that there's... Are they tied to this?
No.
I don't believe so.
We're going to have this built. This originally was going to be built prior to us even knowing about the U, and we were actually thinking that we were going to be utilizing that land since it was empty to address the, putting our equipment in from that side. So now our goal was separate from the U facility.
Okay.
Yeah, just, we want to get all the 4KV off our system, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else here who'd like to speak. So do you have anything you'd like to say in summary or you feel pretty comfortable?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. With that, we will close the record and I'm open to comments.
I think from the pictures that I've seen in the packet, it appears to me to have less of an impact visually than the current equipment does, and so I'm in support of that. I think that ties in nice if, in fact, the landscaping plan is followed and is maintained and, and looks visually attractive. It's nice to have that done in combination with the new construction of the YOU Center. So I think that goes, you know, a nice way in taking what is kind of, I would consider a blighting sight right next to it and, and upgrading it.
Anybody else?
I think I would really prefer this new thing that you're putting there with the new building. I think it'll all update the entire corner, so it's a great idea.
All right. So this is a special use, so again, we're making a recommendation to city council, and there are nine standards for special uses, so let's run through them again. Number one, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. I do know that we are making a minor modification from what was the requirement for screening in the community around these sorts of utilities, but I do happen to think that this change is a good one. I think having a little bit more space and sightlines through keeps everything safer and more open and, and generally gives, provides a safer environment for the community as well as something that's more attractive. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. Again, because this is in conjunction with the redevelopment of the lot directly to the east, I think that this is a welcome development to that strip of church and will certainly increase the attractiveness and the desirability of that block. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. Because the equipment is smaller, I think that it definitely has a benefit to everyone in the neighborhood visually because the equipment is larger and more reliable. There's certainly a marked benefit there as well. And I think, again, the removal of that fence, which is not, that existing fence, which is not attractive in the least, and the replacement with, with some desirable landscaping is certainly going to increase the value of the property in the neighborhood. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. They are serving us fantastically and they're going to make it better by doing that, so I think they have achieved that. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. Certainly, this isn't applicable to this, but in any case, they do have parking on site for their trucks, so the trucks won't be in the middle of the street when they do need to service equipment and get power back on as necessary. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This isn't really applicable in this case. However, the next one is, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. And although it doesn't preserve them, except, with the exception of the two trees out front, it actually enhances them by creating a nice landscaped environment for the neighborhood and giving some softness to that corner, which will help with all sorts of things. Number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the plan development process or the grant of a variation. And I don't think that's applicable either. I don't think that there seem to be any conditions we need to place on this that were not addressed in the DAPR meeting and that the, that the applicant has not addressed, except to mere things. Seems like he wants to mention something. Oh, I got to do both? Oh, come on. All right. So since we are, it's also a, so what are we doing here? We're making a recommendation because it's a special use.
And a major zoning relief.
Where's the major variation?
Major zoning relief to replace existing.
For no fencing.
Fencing around the equipment and around the parking.
Okay.
And a variation for the plantings to be 48 inches on center instead of 36.
Okay. So there are seven standards for major variation, so let me run through those. Number one, the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. I believe that the swapping of the unattractive fence for attractive landscaping will in fact increase the use enjoyment of property values, and so that, that standard has been met. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance here is requiring screening for parking, and I believe that the fence was about the protection of the site. Now that the utilities don't require protection, that fencing is no longer required, and with the screening, they are screening the, the temporary parking. So I believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I do think that it is peculiar to the property because we are close to two highly youth-intensive uses, being the school and the YOU building next door. And I know that the, the particular interest in, in creating sightlines through the property is from a safety perspective and being able to see in and not have things happen in there that you can't see what's going on. So I do believe that there are some unique perspectives to this particular property and the use of it and its relationship to the other, the adjacent properties. So I believe that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, I think that this is really a, a safety issue, more so than a, an aesthetic issue. And so I think that the, the utility is trying to meet the requirements of the neighborhood and, again, the unique location it has. And so I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Clearly, they're not trying to extract additional income. They're trying to increase the reliability of the systems of the utilities in place and provide a safe and secure environment for their equipment, as well as to create a, a pleasing environment for the rest of the neighborhood. So I do believe that that standard has been met. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Everything's been there for forever. The school's been there, YOU is new, but the, certainly the utility has been there for a while, and so that has, that standard has been met. Number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable zoning, applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals issues its decision or recommendation to the city council regarding said variation. They have modified the, the spacing of the landscaping from 36 inches to 48 inches, which again was a request of the city, and so I do believe that that is the minimum change necessary. And also the, the, removing the fencing to create a more open site that also is more attractive to the neighborhood. So I do believe that standard has been met. With that, we have gone through all the standards for variations and for special uses. Is there a motion?
In the matter of ZBA 15ZMJV0114, 1919 Church Street, I recommend that the zoning board of appeals make a positive recommendation to city council.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And with four votes, the special use passes. Now we vote on the variation, yes? So now may I have a motion on the variance, on the major variances, please?
Okay. In the matter of ZBA 157MJV0114, 1919 Church Street, I recommend that the zoning board of appeals make a favorable, full recommendation to city council for...
We're actually approving it. It's a variance.
Oh, approve the variance for this address.
Hang on, sorry.
It still goes to city council since it's a special use.
No, I know that, but don't we just approve the major variance? No, it's still...
The whole thing goes to city council.
Okeydoke. My apologies.
I recommend that we make a favorable approval to city council for 1919 Church Street.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And with four votes, the motion will move on to city council with approval, with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the election of a ZBA vice chair. So since we don't have everybody here tonight, I'm not sure we necessarily want to vote on this, but is there anybody who's interested, anybody here who's interested in being the vice chair? Which is to be chairman when I am not available or around. As the case may be.
I recommend we table that to the next meeting.
Assuming we have people. Is there anybody who's interested tonight, just to make that as part of the minutes?
I think that we can communicate with Melissa. I, I don't know enough about it, and I would say that people correspond personally with Melissa if they do have an interest, and then we table this for the evening and talk about it at the next meeting, presuming we have a fuller house.
Okay. Do we have to move that for continuance? Is that how that works?
I want to be on.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue that?
I move we continue this discussion to the next meeting.
Second.
Fantastic. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
You've taken my favorite part. All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right.